We'll get started this evening with council meeting follow-up in liquor licenses in particular. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. We are, I say "we," it's actually you, are facing some decisions here soon where we've got three applicants for bar and grill licenses in our community, and as you all know, we've got two licenses to give. One of the suggestions from among your group here was to visit with our friends here from the liquor division with the state of Wyoming who we have represented on your screen here to answer some questions, particularly as it relates to the distinctions between restaurant licenses and bar and grill licenses, so that if indeed one of your applicants is, you know, more eligible for a restaurant license, you all would be aware of those distinctions very acutely in the event that that would make more sense for one of the applicants. And of course, that's, you know, kind of the deliberation that you have to work through, if you will, because again, unfortunately, we don't have three licenses to give. And so with that, that, I think, would be a good leadoff question with regard to our guests here this evening. However, the intent here is to, of course, give you the opportunity to field any questions that you have. Mr. Mayor, we do have Councilman Gamroth on Zoom with us, our go-to meeting, with us tonight as well, should he have any questions that he would want to chime in with also. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if I could defer the floor to our friends from Cheyenne here, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves, gentlemen, and kind of leading off with that discussion, we'll, I'm sure, have questions pursuant to the mayor's willingness to entertain those.
Sure, thanks, Carter. Kelly Hunt, Wyoming Liquor Division. To my right will be Jason Allen. He ran to grab those applications, so we had him in front of us, and Tom Montoya be here to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Mayor, would it be okay if they walked us through some of those distinctions relating to restaurant licenses and bar and grill licenses?
Yep, I think that'd be great. Kelly, if you could give us just kind of a brief definition of what each one of those are and how they differ from one another?
Absolutely, Mayor Friel. Basically, they have the same requirements, they have the same qualifiers, they have the same restrictions. The only difference between a restaurant license and a bar and grill license is the bar and grill allows you to have a bar or lounge area, okay? The fee is a little bit higher as well because it is a newer license, so there is a little bit of a difference there, but that's basically it. You still have to have a 60-40 split between food and alcohol sales. What else do they?
Well, the bar and grill is limited on population.
Yeah, the bar and grill is limited by population, just like full retail licenses are. Restaurant licenses are unlimited, so you can have as many of those as you want. We did take away, this last legislative session, the requirement to have a room with a restaurant. So basically, they don't have to construct anything or have a little room that we used to in the past to mix and pour and then deliver out to a table or booth. They can do it a lot more freely than they could prior to July 1st.
Councilman, now.
So Kelly, without a pour room, what's the difference between the two, really?
Good question. Again, you can't have a bar on a restaurant license, so that's why they have a bar and grill license versus a restaurant. Restaurant is basically service-only. You have one little area where you mix and pour in, and then you deliver it out to a table or booth or wherever the patron's sitting, where a bar and grill license allows you to pour right in front of them. You could actually have a bar, and you can do it right on the countertop. You could not do that on a restaurant license.
Okay, but if you're not requiring a room anymore, what's to keep them from pouring in front of the customer, I guess is the question.
Good, good question. That would actually be up to you folks, because specifically in statute, it says you cannot put yourself out as a bar or operate as a bar under a restaurant license. So if I'm standing there at the counter and I'm pouring, that's a bar.
One last question, if you don't mind. Who regulates or how do you regulate the 60-40? I owned a bar and a restaurant in Lander back in the day, and nobody ever checked me, and I had a restaurant license. We were selling more food than alcohol, fortunately, but who regulates that? How do you regulate it?
One, actually, statute regulates that. You have to match the 60-40 split, like I said, on a restaurant or bar and grill license. If you held a full retail license, you may still be a restaurant, but that's not the license you hold. So as a restaurant or a bar and grill, you have to have at least 60% food versus 40% alcohol, and that is done on a yearly basis when they submit their renewal application. There's a specific section on the application that asks for specific sales figures for food and alcohol, so we can make that determination.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions from council members?
I have some discussion amongst us, but I'm wondering if I shouldn't ask Kelly for his guidance on it, I guess. May I do that?
Yeah, Councilman Gamroth, I can't see whether, I don't have you on the screen in front of me, so just if you do have something, just speak up for me and let me know.
Will do. Thanks.
Okay, in the meantime, yeah, go ahead.
So Kelly, I've been looking into the three entities that are asking for this bar and grill license, and I've been looking into it heavy. I've been into each business, I've talked to the people, and like for me, I go into Wyoming Downs, and they're wanting a bar and grill license, but they're really a casino serving finger foods, and they don't have people walking up to the bar to get a drink because they're busy gambling, so they have cocktail waitresses going around. So it seems to me that that's a more ideal situation for a restaurant license, where it's going to be mixed or poured, not in front of the customer anyway, because the cocktail waitress is taking it out to them while they're gambling. Is that, am I seeing this the way you are, or am I going in the right direction, I guess is what I'm asking?
I think that is a very reasonable expectation. Most of the Wyoming Downs in Wyoming actually hold full retail licenses, and in most of their locations, they do actually have bars. They don't serve a whole lot of food in there. One of, one of the ways we've allowed this to happen is we actually took out, not we, the legislature, actually took out a lot of the requirements for restaurant licenses as of July 1st as well, so it'll allow a lot more flexibility of these licenses. So you're absolutely right. A lot more businesses will be able to utilize these licenses instead of a specific bar and grill license or a specific retail license. They very well, as long as they're meeting that food-to-alcohol service requirement, they could operate on a, any type of license, basically, but we're talking specifically about restaurant licenses, they could easily do it.
Well, I'm specifically asking you because if you're us, and we're down to two bar and grill licenses, that's it, wouldn't it make more of a fit for a place like that to have a restaurant license? That's my question for you, because that's the way I'm seeing it, but I want to make sure I'm seeing it the right way.
And that's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kelly or Tom, anybody, are you guys seeing any, any possibility that bar and grill licenses will be reconsidered in terms of the allocations for the number of licenses changing anytime soon, by chance? of licenses changing anytime soon, by chance?
Fantastic question, Carter. Realistically, no. They raised those, what, three years ago, four years ago? It's been fairly recent that they actually adjusted the population formula on those. So my guess, and it's strictly a guess, would be no. There's not much opportunity to change that formula. However, WAM is a pretty big lobbying group. They could definitely go talk to the legislature and try and get those numbers adjusted. Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Gamroth.
Thank you. Could you, gentlemen, please speak to the formula that you mentioned? What is that formula based on? What information? I apologize, I haven't done the research probably necessary to inform myself for this discussion. But I know when I worked in public health, there's research out there regarding alcohol establishment density and its effect on crime and health in the community. And so I was curious, are our current numbers informed by that research? Or are they, how are they set? Is it arbitrary? Is it based on anything specific? Thank you.
Great question. The population formula is set in statute. It's actually under 12, 4, 4, 13, B, Romanet, 1. So that explains how the population formula is set. And that's all done by the legislature. So that will give you the maximum amount of licenses that a jurisdiction can issue. Okay? That doesn't mean you have to issue all of them. It's up to the local licensing authority to determine what's best for their community. And you're seeing that right now where you have two licenses and several applications for those licenses. So it'd be up to them to determine which ones, if any, are good for their community.
And I think the determining factor really for those licenses really was a compromise between the Wyoming State Liquor Association, you know, their board of directors, mostly full retail licensees. So it was really just a compromise, really, for those, how that formula come, you know, determining how many licenses they wanted for the jurisdictions. That's where that was coming from.
Any other questions from anybody? Okay. Well, Kelly and Tom and the group there, I appreciate you coming on tonight and answering those questions for us. I think it's very helpful for us moving forward with the licenses we have left. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Carter, do we have anything further on that now? Okay. All right. We're going to move on to the LGBTQ Advisory Committee update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a number of our committee members represented here this evening. And they simply want an opportunity to update you as to their activities, given that this is a group that you all appoint. And as you can see, they prepared a presentation that they'd like to run through with you. Okay. Daryl?
Thank you. My name is Daryl Wagner. I'm the chairman of the committee. I have two things to share with you. One is a copy of the presentation, which you are each welcome to take your copy. And then this yellow binder is all of the backup documentation that is supporting some of the slides that you'll see, where we show a single graph or make a single quote. And the entire presentation, the press release, is in this book. So if anybody needs more information, that's there. Again, thank you for giving us the chance to share this with you. We basically are going to give you a little bit of background because some of you are newer to the city council, and then talk about some of our earlier projects. And then tonight, we'd also like to make two recommendations to the city council. First of all, in 2018, resolutions 23 and 24 were passed, which reject discrimination of any kind, respect to the inherent worth of every person. There were two resolutions, number 23 and 24. Then, in February of 2020, the city council approved the creation of an LGBTQ advisory committee for the city council. Given everything that 2020 brought us, our first meeting was in November. The first thing that we discussed, which was fairly easy as an observation, was that the city resolutions were not highly visible. And so we requested that city staff make a link available on the city's homepage referring to those resolutions. And that was done very quickly. Thank you. The second thing that we wanted to do was to get a feel for how bullying and LGBTQ policies and procedures were being enforced in the school systems. And to that end, at our February meeting, we extended an invitation to members of the school district and Casper College to have a discussion, an open discussion, on how those things were handled. Things that came out of that discussion were the LGBTQ student safe places, sharing of resources between entities and institutions in terms of reading lists, in terms of software availability, and so on. So that was a very good conversation. And those are actually ongoing on a couple of points. And the discussion of the NCEA Social Justice Committee, which was interesting. So it was a very good conversation. And like I said, we actually got quite a bit of feedback. And some of the feedback that we got reflecting students was then brought back to us again at Casper Pride here this summer. And so for a little bit of a report on our participation in Casper Pride, I'm going to turn it over to Jill Jones.
Hi. I'm Jill Felbeck Jones. I'm a married mother of two, have family members who are LGBTQ, and I'm a teacher in the Tona County School District. I'm an ally on this advisory committee because I see children struggle every day in school. And I want to make a difference in their lives. I want them to feel safe and loved for who they are. Our committee decided to have a booth at the Casper Pride event in June in order to connect with the LGBTQ community. The community was amazed and grateful that this advisory committee exists in Casper. They also want to know ways that they can contact us to share future ideas and receive updates from us. We often live our lives without thinking about the discrimination that happens to others right here in Casper. So we asked them to share their stories of discrimination in our city. I was amazed at the tales of hurt and bigotry they encounter right here. We also had a board where they could write on a sticky note about how they would reimagine their life in Casper, so that we know what to focus on in our committee. The LGBTQ Committee of Casper told us that they want to be themselves everywhere in their town of Casper. We saw four recurring themes in their comments. First, children want to feel safe at school. Second, they want to be able to use the restroom without fear or discrimination. Third, people want to go to their place of employment to be self-sufficient without the worry of being fired for who they are. And lastly, our committee wants, our community wants to have medical professionals who understand the issues for LGBTQ people. Next, Shannon O'Quinn will speak about one recommendation from our committee, which was also mentioned by the LGBTQ community.
Hello. My name is Shannon O'Quinn. I am a self-employed graphic designer, a single mom, and I am a fierce ally to the LGBTQ community. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. I also want to tell you that I am honored to be presenting to the city council, who voted to put this incredible LGBTQ advisory committee together. This experience has been eye-opening and inspiring, and I am excited to report back on our research and what we have learned from our amazing Casper LGBTQ community, and give you our recommendations. Our first recommendation is that Resolution 1823 and 1824 become an ordinance. The resolution was step one, but we need nondiscrimination to become a law in Casper. And here's why. My first slide shares with you recent headlines from Casper and around the state regarding the LGBTQ community. I'm going to wait just a sec. There we go. They are each absolutely horrifying. A transgender woman beat up at a dog park in Casper. A bar in Cheyenne selling T-shirts promoting not just violence, but the death of LGBTQ people. A Casper high school NC allowing teachers and students to pull pride posters, and the school board calling it political when it is 100% a human rights issue. And the story of the magician at the library in Gillette receiving death threats because she is transgender. To go along with this headline, I have attached a quote from County Commissioner Rusty Bell about giving into outrage, one that would only deprive the community of the diversity it desperately needs. My next slide, national articles showing Wyoming the equality state always near the bottom nationally for equality and general quality of life for LGBTQ folks. My next slide, statistics given to me from the National LGBT Chamber of Commerce in Washington, DC. LGBTQ employees spend 15% to 25% of their work week worrying about discrimination, being fired, or violence in the workplace for being LGBTQ. As a social justice advocate, I find those statistics startling. But anyone concerned about economic development should be equally concerned, because that affects employee productivity and the bottom line. Two-thirds of Fortune 500 companies cited nondiscrimination laws as a major factor in opening new offices and relocating headquarters. I have included a quote from Dale Stenbergen, the CEO and president of the Cheyenne Chamber of Commerce, that echoes this message and these statistics. My next slide, there's a lot to read on this one, and I will let you do that on your own. But on this page, I do want to point out two statistics. 78% of Wyoming residents think LGBTQ people experience discrimination in our state. 6%, let me repeat that, 6% of Wyoming adults are protected from discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity, and gender identity. All of this and the overwhelming theme in feedback we receive from Pride is the need for safety and security to be protected. The LGBT community wants to feel secure, and not just physically secure, but secure economically as well. And that means no discrimination. Not with housing, not with jobs, not at school. Discrimination should not be allowed anywhere. The council put into place two resolutions, and we are recommending we now make this an ordinance. The council made a stand with the formal expression that it is their will to not stand for discrimination. And now it is time to take that next step, to protect our LGBTQ community by making this a law. The council should know that Casper would be following in the footsteps of Laramie and Jackson, who already have nondiscrimination ordinances in place. I want to thank you all again for this opportunity. And next, I want to introduce an incredible person and a fellow committee member, Cody Allen Sombra.
Good afternoon. My name is Cody Allen Sombra. I am an active member of the community as the executive director of Joshua Storehouse, a victim services volunteer with the Casper PD, a new CASA advocate, and the co-chair of this committee. In 2016, I traveled to Seattle, and the first thing that I noticed was the tiniest little detail in the corner of over 7,000 buildings, a little sticker. This is the Seattle Safe Place Program, a program started in 2014 by the Seattle Police Department. The goal of the program is to increase reporting of biased crimes by improving the relationship between police, the city, and marginalized populations. This program began as an LGBTQ-centered program, but quickly evolved into all biased crimes, including crimes against a person's race, gender, religion, disability, among other things. The process is pretty simple. First, the police department reaches out to the Seattle LGBTQ liaison, who will ensure that the department's policies of biased crimes are up to date. From there, they involve businesses and schools within the community by giving them a sticker to put in their windows. The only cost associated with this program is $3 per sticker. And there is absolutely no liability to the business, as all they have to do is let the victim stay in the business and call 911 to report the crime. Over 300 cities across North America, the United States, Canada, and Europe have adopted this program successfully, the smallest of which has a police force of only five officers. And it seems that the interest for a program like this here in Casper would be pretty high. We already have a list of 100 individual businesses who have pledged their support for the LGBTQ community. So what is the goal for a city the size of Casper? As I'm sure many of you know, Wyoming is one of only three states without hate crime laws. This leaves many biased crimes to go unreported within the city and the state. We, as a committee, have heard from Casper residents that they feel unsafe walking down the streets. And sometimes they feel as though they can't even trust their own police force. This program is a step in the right direction to ensure that no violent crime goes unreported in the city limits of Casper. It does this by showing LGBTQ and other marginalized groups that the police department takes these crimes seriously. Many LGBTQ community members leave the state because of discrimination. But if they feel safe, they'll be more likely to live, purchase, and work here in the state. Seattle has seen much success in the seven years since implementation. This graph shows the steady rise of biased crime reporting since the implementation in 2015. During the Seattle Pride of 2014, eight violent crimes took place against LGBTQ individuals. But the police were not notified until later dates, leading to absolutely no convictions. Fast forward to Pride of 2015, the year after implementation of the Safe Place Program, and again, eight crimes happened against LGBTQ individuals. But because of the stickers and the improved relationships, all eight crimes were reported, which resulted in seven convictions, one on a federal level. We continue to see this number rise, going from 26 LGBTQ biased crimes in 2014 to 156 in 2020. And other crimes went from 100 to 645. That is a huge increase in trust between these marginalized groups that are having crimes committed against them. That is a huge increase. Because of what we have heard from the LGBTQ members of the community of Casper, the low cost of the program, community support, and the promising statistics from Seattle, we are recommending to the council that you support the implementation of the Casper Safe Place Program to promote the amount of crimes being reported and improve relations between the city, police, and marginalized groups. Thank you. And the entire committee will now be open to any questions you may have.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
I'll start off, the only reason I'll start off is I've been as the liaison to this committee and council. And I want to let the community know how proud I am of the work that they've done, the efforts that they've put in. A lot of time, you'll put a committee or a council together, and then a lot doesn't get done. But they've, as you can see, have done a lot of work as far as what needs to be done in our community. And I want to say this, I'm going to voice this really quickly. We're one of three states in the entire Union that does not have a hate crimes bill, and Matthew Shepard died in this state. It is an embarrassment that we do not have a hate crimes bill in this state. One of three states, I'm going to say it one more time, that we do not have a hate crimes bill, and Matthew Shepard was killed in Laramie, Wyoming. So it has been great working with this group. They are, they have direction. They're working hard. And I appreciate the effort. I know the effort that they put into this. I saw the emails. I saw the conversations going on. So it was fantastic. And this does not do justice for what they have done overall. And I want to recognize Heidi really quick. She's a staff member for the city. She has done a fantastic job helping us out as well. And so I think there's a lot of conversation that we need to have, not only today, but I think down the road, on how we go from that, and the recommendations of an ordinance in this community. on how we go from that and the recommendations of an ordinance in this community. I would love to see a state law against a hate crimes bill. And I think we need to have that. That conversation needs to happen at our state level. But unfortunately, I don't have a lot of faith right now. But I think that we need to look at that direction. So this is a good conversation to have, and so I'll open it up and I'll kind of rip the Band-Aid off to have that conversation. So thank you, guys, for everything you're doing.
Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks so much to the committee for this work. I'm very excited to see that you've kind of taken all of this and boiled it down to two specific recommendations and things that we can, that we can take a look at and dig into. And I agree with Councilman Pacheco that we do need something at the state level. But in the meantime, we, as a council, can take steps to make things better for people here. And we don't have to wait for the state to take action on this. It would be great if they did, and there are efforts that have been going on for ages to make that a reality. But, you know, we don't have obviously control over that, but we do have control over what policies and action we take here in our own community. And so I just encourage the council to consider taking that action. Consider, you know, the statistics that you've been presented with here and all of the information. It's a lot of work to compile. You know, I don't know how many people you heard from at Casper Pride, but I think this is probably one of the most comprehensive efforts that the city has ever undertaken in terms of getting the voice of LGBTQ folks here to this podium so that we really do know what's going on. And so I think this is probably, you know, some of the best information that we've ever had to go on in terms of what we could do and what direction we should take. So thank you for doing that, and just encourage the council to, you know, let's not wait for the state to do what's necessary. Let's be leaders here in our own community.
Anyone else?
I'd like to kind of echo a little bit of what Councilmember Pollock's saying is that, you know, it all starts here. And of all the committees that I sit on, I have to tell you, this committee is like 100% vested in it from the moment we start until we stop. And sometimes when we stop is not when we plan on stopping, it's later. But it is 100% full speed ahead, and it shows. Everything you've done to this point shows you, you guys are absolutely leading the way. And to stand back and not take anything away from the state themselves, things move slow at the state level. But if we wait for the state to do something, we may be waiting a long time. So it's good that you've got a ball rolling here and just keep on doing what you're doing because you're doing outstanding, an outstanding job across the board, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have just one question.
Oh, yeah, I keep forgetting Councilman Gamaroff is out there.
Thank you. Well, I would concur with what's already been said. It's very frustrating seeing this on the statewide level every single year, not make it through. I believe it's been talked about, you know, for the past 10, 15 years. We already have protections protecting people's political affiliation, race, color, sex, religious beliefs, or age from being unfairly discriminated against. So it only makes sense to include gender identity and sexual orientation as well. I wonder if the advisory committee has any further suggestions? I know when the resolution was talked about last time, a lot of people were worried, even though it was only a resolution. So they were misunderstood at that time. But with the consideration of an ordinance, I assume there would be some sort of teeth to that. And so I know Laramie, for instance, if somebody, you know, there's a charge of discrimination based on gender identity or sexual orientation, that person will be referred to sensitivity training. And then, you know, if they refuse that, things would escalate from there. Does the committee have any suggestions in that realm as far as what they'd like to see the ordinance offer in terms of, you know, consequences? Thank you.
We haven't spoken specifically to what that might be. But we have been doing enough research in other communities of our size, or larger or smaller, who have proceeded with ordinances. And we're quite confident that we could come up with a range of issues that would be more specific and resolutions to those issues, if that makes sense. I'm pretty confident about that.
And I think it's going to take examining other communities, even maybe outside of Wyoming. What works, what doesn't work, what seems reasonable and what isn't. So I think it's going to take some additional research. But we're ready.
That's also one of the nice things about starting the conversation with the Seattle Safe Place Program is that we have now begun that conversation, and we have 300 community resources that we can go to and say, how are you dealing with this particular issue? Or so on. The other interesting thing that we found in talking to the Seattle Police Department is that it started specifically as an LGBTQ program. And that lasted, what, two years?
Yeah.
And it quickly expanded to all biased crimes and all hate crimes. So it has become a more blanket program for...
If you actually look at the statistics that we gave you, it actually, other biased crimes, mostly race, the program has actually been more successful on terms of that. So it's not just an LGBTQ-centered, it's not. It encompasses that. And if you look at the sticker that we designed for, we actually put dollars at the top to represent that it's not just LGBTQ, it is any sort of biased crime.
Did you have some else? Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you, Mayor. I did think of one more thing as I'm listening to Councilman Gamaroff's question and the answers. I think it's important to remember, too, that there's not one thing that we can do that's going to fix this, to solve any of these problems. It's going to be a variety of things. We've got two examples here, and I think the things that are really important within these is, you know, building of partnerships, speaking about building partnerships with the PD, with the city, with the community at large. Starting this community dialogue, you know, getting the voices of these folks at the table so we even really know, we get a true picture of what's going on. And so I think it's a, it's going to be a, you know, approaching the problem from a variety of angles. And so I think that, you know, I think one of the arguments will be like, well, an ordinance is not going to stop these crimes from happening. And, you know, sadly, that's probably true. But it is one tool among a host of many tools that we need as a community to be able to leverage to create the kind of welcoming community that we all want to see. So I think we should just keep that in mind, too. Here's a couple concrete steps we can take. There's probably more. This should not be the end of the conversation, should be the beginning. And, you know, efforts to build partnerships throughout the community are, I think, are what will really strengthen the community and get us where we need to be in terms of making sure that folks in the LGBTQ community are welcome, are supported. And when those folks are supported, that generally means that we've created an atmosphere and a landscape where everyone in our community is supported. So I would just add that as we think about this dialogue, that it's not, there's no silver bullet. But, you know, we should approach from a lot of different angles.
Mr. City Mayor, oh, Councilman Gamaroff.
I have heard a lot about hate crimes, biased crimes. We're one of only three states that doesn't have them. But by the same token, we are supposed to be coming together. So why should murder, or assault, or any other crime against two different groups be more of a punishment than that same crime within the same group? And I do not believe that that is doing anything to help us come together by saying that if I were to assault you, that deserves more punishment than if I assault our city attorney, Mr. Henley. All that's doing is setting up a separate class, a separate class of punishment, and it is not bringing everybody together. It is setting a crime that you're setting yourself, or a black person, or whatever, you're setting yourself apart as something special. And that isn't what we're trying to do. We're trying to bring our communities together and to consolidate our people and try to be Americans and not a specific moniker along with American. And this comes from my relatives, some of my family's relatives that were immigrants back in the 20s and 30s and 40s. And they came here to be Americans. They didn't come here to be Irish Americans or Czechoslovakian Americans. They came here to be Americans. And that's where I feel we need to be, is we need to be Americans. And I don't care whether you're black, white, gay, homosexual, whatever. We need to be Americans, and we need to be, as Martin Luther King said, is judged on our quality of character, not anything else. That's my opinion, which is counter to what I've just heard by everybody else. But that's where I feel, and that's where I stand.
Sure. And I think that's a common opinion in Wyoming. And I want to ask you a few questions, if that's okay, because it'll help me with my response. I assume you're straight?
Yeah.
Okay. And married?
Fifty years, last week, yeah.
Congratulations. Have you ever walked down the street with your wife and had someone yell at you because you're holding her hand?
Yeah.
They've had slurs at you about who you are because you're holding a woman's hand?
Not necessarily slurs, but they've made comments.
Sure. Have you ever been afraid you're going to lose your job because you're married to a woman or you're attracted to women?
I have not been worried about losing my job because, again, it doesn't matter.
Have you ever had someone deny you housing because you are married to a woman?
No, because I'm a veteran, so I wind up...
Have you ever been afraid to use the bathroom?
In certain places.
But is it because you like women?
Do what?
Is it because you like women?
No.
Exactly. So we're looking at a group of people that are judged just living their lives. They want to be able to walk down the street. They want to be able to work at their job. They want to be able to get the apartment they want without being, this is a perfect example right here, without being told no. And what, everybody thinks this is in your face. We're LGBTQ, we want special treatment. It's the opposite. Leave us alone. Let us live our lives the same way you and I get to live our lives, with the freedom to go to the bathroom without fear, with the freedom to go to school without being torn down posters because of what you believe and you celebrate your life. They want to be left alone. It's not in your face. It is coming out and saying, treat me like a person the same way you and I are treated. I get to live my life because I am a straight woman, and nobody thinks twice about it. We want the same for these folks, non-discrimination. That's what they're asking for.
Let me ask you a question now.
Sure.
You made the comment that you were a straight woman.
Yes.
If you had a man walk into your bathroom, how would you feel?
I'm all for coed bathrooms, so that's a bad question to ask me. I love it. I really do. I, so that's not a great question. I think, you know, you go into your stall, you use the bathroom.
Well, do what?
Yeah. So, no, I wouldn't, I...
You don't feel threatened or anything else?
I personally do not. I've actually, I've lived in cities, Atlanta, Denver, Washington DC. And I've even gone into establishments that have, like, a complete opening between the men's and the women's rooms so that when you go up to wash your hands, you are pretty much adjoined. I believe in gender-neutral bathrooms. I believe in just letting people be.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pollock.
A couple responses to Councilman Kathy, just when we're, I mean, first of all, we're not, we're not actually talking about a biased motivated crime bill here. But I do think that is a conversation. When we talk about biased motivated crimes, you know, why should somebody be punished more for a hate crime? The reason is, is a hate crime is a special, specific type of crime. It doesn't, it doesn't, something doesn't automatically become a hate crime when a crime is perpetuated from one person in a certain group to another person. It has a lot to do with other evidence that indicates a specific intention that was intended to target that person based on their identity. And when that happens, an entire community of folks is victimized, not just the individual victim that suffered most directly from the crime. But it, it has the same effect that terrorism has, where, you know, the point of that is to make people afraid. And that's why those crimes are particularly egregious. Same situation in biased motivated crimes in a much smaller micro sort of scale than any sort of, you know, like nationwide terrorist attack or something like that. But, but it serves to make people afraid, and that's the purpose of them. And so it's not just any crime from, you know, a black person to a white person or a straight person committed against a gay person that's automatically going to be considered a biased motivated crime or hate crime. There has to be a set of evidence that indicates there was a specific intention behind that crime to target somebody based on their identity. And if that is the case, the whole community then knows that that was the case. And now they have to be afraid if they happen to share that same identity. So you create a whole group of victims rather than a single victim, and that's why the impact is greater. And that's why in many places they have found that it's more appropriate to create a greater punishment for that crime. So that's not even actually what is in the recommendation here. But just when we're thinking about biased motivated crime and having this conversation, it's not, it's a different type of crime. It's a particularly egregious type of crime, and it has been treated as such in many places for many, many, many years for that specific reason.
And again, you know, we reached out to the community directly at Pride, and our statistics show what the overwhelming response is, is keep us safe. They do not feel safe. And at the end of the day, that is what we need to focus on. We have community members that do not feel safe in our community. And they're asking for very little, very, very little.
Councilman now.
Thank you. I want to offer, I want to offer just a little different insight. And I hope this is heard with the intent that I mean, that I'm about to say. A lot of times in the LGBTQ community, things are so over, they're just overs. Everything's blown up so big. It's such a big deal. And, you know, and what made me think of this is I looked at the picture you put up of the young lady who got stomped in the park, used to be a man, and beat, allegedly beat, three former partners and hospitalized one of them with assault. And from what I understand, that was retaliation for that, not because she was trans. Yet, she makes front-page news for the trans community when that's not why she took the beating. It's things like that. It's things like, and I have friends that are gay. I have, my best friend's son is homosexual. I don't have any issue with that. You love who you want to love as far as I'm concerned. Now, religiously, I have my doctrine in divinity. Do I have my ideology of how this is going to play out in the end? I do, but I'm not judging because it's not my place. Everybody will answer for their own stuff at the end of this thing we call life. That's the way I see it. However, I have a 10-year-old daughter. Do I want a man walking into that restroom that decides, wakes up one day and decides, or 15 years down the road decides he wants to be a woman? Do I want him in a bathroom with my 10-year-old daughter? No, I don't. And so if we're going to make hate crimes and do things like this in the particular state we live in, I don't know many men that are going to allow that to happen. And I don't know how you get, I don't know how you get by that. I don't know, you know? But me personally, that would bother me. And, you know, I look at the men who have decided to become women, who compete in the Olympics, who are winning all the women's athletic events like weightlifting and things like that. Men are built different. They, they're physiologically different. And so if they're going to compete with a woman, they're going to, they're going to win 90% of the time. It's proven. So there's a whole lot of issues that go along with this, and everything gets so over sensationalized. Do I believe you should be able to be safe? Do I believe you should feel protected? Absolutely. Would I come to your aid if someone was bothering you because of who you decide to love? You bet. I'll be there to help you. But there are so many other things that go in with this that create issues in a community like ours. like ours, that we've got to find answers, not just by passing an ordinance. We have to find answers that are amenable and workable for everyone, not just for you folks, and not just for the scared people. There's got to be middle ground. And what I see from groups like yours is you want to be safe and you want to be left alone. Yet, I see a lot of pushing to get what it is you're after. And somehow, there's got to be middle ground. I'm just, I'm trying to speak as a, as a caring advocate, but I want you to look at the other side too, because there's just too many things going into this that have to be figured out.
Absolutely. I agree completely. I'm one who would prefer a gender, gender-neutral bathroom.
Yes.
Not a public bathroom where everybody's coming and going. That's me. That's my, and that's a whole nother issue. What we have come to in our discussions is that the main issue, we're getting feedback from the students in the high schools, and we're getting feedback from the community that says you have 16-year-old, 17-year-old students who do not feel safe in their environment and who will lay low, keep their head down, and can't wait to get out of here. That's not a nurturing environment, and that's not the community that I think we want to be developing. We want everybody to be equal. It's not about gay rights, it's about equal rights. It's about equal protections. And what we as a committee have looked at, there are so many different variables. There are so many different ways to look at what a hate crime is, how it's being prosecuted, our conversations with the school district, what are the policies? How are they protected? What is the training that goes into the people who are there to counsel these students? There are too many variables. That's why we came to you with two specific recommendations. One is the continuation of what the council had already developed in a resolution. And second of all, the development of the Safe Space Program, which shows, as Cody brought to us, that it's not about cutting down on the number of crimes. It's about developing the trust in the community that there are businesses and the city is willing to back you up when something happens. We don't know what's going to happen after that. That's for a whole nother set of meetings. But our recommendation is that the city develop the plan to ensure that we are expressing that kind of trust to the young people in this community and to the people who want to come to this community, who want to know, are they going to be protected?
Okay.
I'm just going to keep it simple. I agree with Councilman Pollock. We need to have these conversations, because everybody has different views. We've lived different places. I just know I've been traveling down in Florida and around the western states. When, a lot of the restrooms are gender-neutral now. You don't go in where there's a bunch of stalls. There's just, you know, one, and then another one, and then another one, and another one, and they're all self-contained. There's so many great ideas out there, and we just need to kind of put ourselves aside, I think, and look what works. When we do our research together, we have so many people coming from different views that I think we can find great solutions for Casper, because Casper and Wyoming are great places to live. But we need to make it better. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I would be upset with myself if I didn't take this opportunity as a learning. There's something that you said that I, I need to say. It's not a choice. This isn't somebody decided to be a man one day and walk into the bathroom.
I get that. What, what I wanted you to under...
I want to finish, please.
Oh, go ahead.
Please let me finish.
Go ahead.
They didn't decide to be a man and walk into the bathroom. Just like you and I never decided to be straight, we just knew we were straight. What this is, is it's a period of time where they're building up the courage to be authentic and to come out as who they are. And that goes for trans as well. It's not, it's not a decision that one day, oh, I'm going to be a man. It is who they are in their soul. And that's the decision they make. They make it off, based off who they are on the inside, and they want a body to match. And I would suggest that there is so much to learn. And this community is so open to conversation. If you have questions, ask them. Ask them, because they are willing to teach for that respect.
And you are absolutely correct, and I did misspeak. What I meant, and I said before I started, I hope what I'm trying to say to you comes out. What I meant was you, they may be a man in a woman's body and, and know that in their heart of hearts from the time they're an adolescent. My point was when they finally decide to make that transition or make that decision. So you've got a 15-year-old that's been going to the men's bathroom all through elementary, middle school, and then he gets into high school and finally decides it's time, and now he's using the other bathroom, and there's going to be a whole lot of confusion, there's going to be a whole lot of creation of a lot of issues. That's why I'm saying there's a lot of things that have to be dealt with here.
The bathroom is a huge issue, and that's a huge issue in and of itself. But trust me, that decision to go and use the other bathroom, the bathroom that is of your authentic self, is not an easy one. It is a fearful one. And that's why we encourage gender-neutral bathrooms, so that that transition is easier for everybody.
Councilwoman Engbretson.
So I personally have been on the side of this whole bathroom thing, and I know that this isn't it, that what we're talking about. And I do believe, like, single bathrooms, general neutral is probably the best way to go expense-wise, however. It's not reasonable. I'm in a large office building, and countless times, a man, suit, tie, suitcase, the whole nine, uses the women's bathroom because it's cleaner. And it happens all the time. We call the building and try to get him out of the bathroom, and then he conveniently says, well, I'm trans. We are then having to go all around the building to try to locate a restroom that a man isn't in the women's bathroom. So people are using it to whatever their advantage is as well. So we can't, there's no way we're going to be able to ever dictate that people aren't going to abuse it, because people are absolutely going to abuse it. And the only way around that would be your general-neutral bathrooms. However, it's just, in like my building, I can't even imagine the cost of something of that nature. So it is a big issue, and so you, you have both sides of it. But will I go into the bathroom with that man in there? No. No. I'm wandering around the building looking for a bathroom, to the point to where I've had to go across the street to a whole other building, just because I didn't feel safe. And I think that's important, too. It's just that we, as humans, should feel safe using a restroom for our basic human needs, period.
Steve. John, is it appropriate in a work session to say point of order? I feel like spending 30 minutes on bathrooms is not what we're here to talk about, and we're really taking the conversation away from what we're actually here to discuss.
Yeah, very much so. Okay, so to get back on topic, and, and you're right, bathrooms are not a discussion for right now. Hate crime bills, that's later down the road, you know?
If I can say something? What we're here to talk about today is that people in your city, your constituents, are not feeling safe. That is what we're here for. That is what these two resolutions are talking about. We're not talking about bathrooms. We're not talking about hate crime laws on a state level. We are talking about your constituents that voted you into your positions are feeling unsafe. And how are we going to fix that? That is what we're here to talk about. And we have brought you two very solid points that should be being conversed that aren't. We ran off on this tangent about bathrooms. We should be conversing about these points of your constituents not feeling safe in their own homes and their own cities and their own workplaces.
So to finish what I was about to say, Mr. City Manager, when it comes to the safe places, it seems to me, the conversation's been had with the school district or, or that conversation's being had about safe places for, for students. It seems to me that we have businesses in town that are backing this, this type of a program. I believe the chief's been involved in some conversations about having the Safe Place Program put here. The cost seems minimal. It's $3 per sticker. What's our next step? What, what do we need to do to move forward on that program by itself? Is it a resolution that needs to be passed? More conversation that we need to have? Where do we go from here?
Mr. Mayor, I think you're asking a really appropriate question, because you're right. This is a bifurcated request that we're receiving from your, your committee. I, I would tell you that in order to establish a safe program here in the community, we, we do need to look into not only, you know, what partners we have in the community and so forth that would help bring this forward, but what issues we have with regard to signing on to a program that is trademarked and, and so on, and what those obligations are, what those requirements are and everything else. So as far as that part of the request is concerned, I think there is more research we need to do, so that when we do bring forward a resolution for your consideration, those issues have been considered, and you have all the facts at hand in order to make that decision as appropriately as you possibly can.
Okay. Councilmember Pollock.
If I can also request, I think that some sort of draft ordinance would be helpful to us for the second part of this request, just so that we have an actual thing with actual language to consider, rather than having to speculate what might be in there, what might not be in there, what it might cover, what it might not cover. So if, if that is all right, to, to get some sort of draft, a working draft or, or whatever it may be, that, so that there's something tangible that we can look at and evaluate to, to start the conversation, to see if it, you know, is something that we can, we can come to agreement on.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember, I think you're totally correct. Much like ordinance discussions in our recent past, there's a lot to what it is that the ordinance will actually say. And so my recommendation would be, as far as that part of the request is concerned, that indeed some time be taken with our, with our friends here from the committee to discuss in some detail what it is that they would like to see, what it is that they are proposing to all of you to consider. Work that over through a work session process, so that, you know, something can be ready for formal deliberation that obviously would require three public readings and, and pertinent public hearings and, and those kinds of things. So without a doubt, I, I think both of these require some level of, of work and, and discussion and drafts and redrafts and those kinds of things, so that when you come to the floor, you have something ready to go that, that you all feel generally pretty comfortable with, that obviously the public would need to deliberate with you as well. Couldn't agree more. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm, staff would be prepared to take whatever direction you have, but indeed we've got two, two tracks that need to be considered.
Okay. Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Yeah, that, that's my clarification, is my next step would be, I was going to do exactly what Councilmember Pollock said, was the ordinance piece of it, but the second piece would be a work session. Now, let me ask you this, Carter. Is it a question of a work session that we have to put down and say, okay, we want this to be a work session? Or the council has to say, we want this as a work session? Or do we wait until you take that next step with, with sitting down and saying, we're going to craft an ordinance? Or how do we, I guess, what's the next step for us as far as creating a work session to have this conversation?
Mr. Mayor, very fair question. I would suggest that council has two directives they need to give tonight, or, or consider to give tonight, I guess I'd say. One would be starting the ordinance process that, that I would absolutely suggest requires a work session process to work over the language that an ordinance would propose, a proposed ordinance would suggest. I would also say council needs to give direction as to a resolution that would put a safe program in place or something similar for the, the city of Casper to consider. So you've really got two directives you need to consider this evening, or, or take into advisement and consider directives at some point.
I think that the stickers are a great idea. But what I'm trying to figure out is, so is the city going to make these stickers and then people, businesses purchase them from the city, or is it going to be from a different entity?
So the way the Seattle Police Department does it is, it's through the police department. The police department pays for the stickers, and then they're free to the businesses. I don't believe we have to do it that way. That's a conversation that you guys can have on the way you want to do it. That's a conversation that you can have with Corio, which is who the liaison for the Seattle Safe Place Program is. You guys don't have to do it exactly how they do it. There is leeway to change it to what works best for Casper. We've also discussed how we would roll this out if we did. And I believe Chief was part of that conversation, in terms of a member of the police force and a member from our committee would go, starting with those businesses that have agreed to be part of the program, you go in, talk specifically to the protocols, and give them the sticker. So we would, mechanically, that would be how it would roll out in Casper. We would start with those businesses that have already shown support for a program and then expand from there. But it would include a police officer and a member of our committee going to each of those businesses. But in terms of the cost of the implementation, there's only two costs. The cost of the stickers, which the city covers, and the cost of what additional training needs to happen if it isn't already in place.
Councilman Nell.
Are your meetings open? Your, that you, when you folks get together, are they open meetings?
Absolutely. We actually, today is the first time we've seen this many people in the same room. We've been on, on go-to meeting since November. So we, we will be meeting open here now, moving forward, or if, anybody can participate.
Well, the reason I'm asking is I would, I would appreciate an invitation if you are so inclined. I, I would like to learn more about what it is your group is facing. I would like to learn more about what you're going through, period, because I'm alien to it, obviously. But I also think that sometimes fresh eyes on something don't hurt either. So I would appreciate an invitation, so that I can be involved with and see exactly what you're facing, so that I could be part of a solution and, and quit perpetuating the problem.
Thank you. We will make sure that you get that invitation.
Thank you.
Councilman Nell, myself, and Vice Mayor Pacheco are on that, so I do want to make sure that you get an invite to the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, so you need direction on, first of all, direction on starting an ordinance process itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So as far as starting the ordinance process itself for an anti-discrimination law, can I get a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Okay. And as far as a resolution for a safe program, or implementing a safe program into the community, can I get a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, and I appreciate it, all of you, tonight coming and speaking, and, and we'll move forward.
Thank you so much for letting us take up so much time.
No problem. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, we'll move on to I-25 enhancements funds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As it relates to this next item, I, I can't remember how often or how much we've talked about this, but certainly, at least reference this opportunity that we have coming up here in the next couple of years. YDOT is anticipating making a fairly significant investment with respect to the I-25 corridor as it extends from Poplar all the way to East Yellowstone. And so, as you might imagine, with regard to that reconstruction and, and so on, there's quite a bit of interface that, that, you know, that our community will have an opportunity to improve with, with Casper, here in Casper, the, the interface with our community. Accordingly, like other programs that, that we've been able to take advantage of, there will be dollars available for the city to have a stake in with regard to what they call context-sensitive amenities that, that we can take the opportunity to share investment with. Many of you who participated in the similar discussion as it relates to Poplar Street coming through Casper will recall very similar discussions as it relates to features relating to the new bridge that are, that, you know, will cross over the river when that project starts next year. We were hoping it would start this year. That didn't happen. That didn't happen. And that included pathways, it included lighting, and so on. In this particular circumstance, we are talking about $800,000 as it relates to those investments in terms of the interface with our community from the interstate. Now, that will be spread over two phases. The first phase that will start in '23 will include, if I remember correctly, Center Street to McKinley, and Andrew will clarify any of this if I'm wrong, maybe Poplar to McKinley, and then McKinley to East Yellowstone in Phase Two, which we anticipate taking place in '25. The challenge that we have here is that while this is obviously several years out and many years of work, they're looking for that agreement in the near term. They'd like to have that as soon as we can produce it. Now, the other challenge that we have is we will need to obligate some funds as it relates to not only the design, but what it is that council would like to see constructed over and above what the $800,000 might include. And so that will be a question that you all get to tackle, being the council of the day, even though by the time a lot of this work actually is completed, many of you may not be on the council at the time, of course. So that's the dilemma in front of us, that's the challenge in front of us. It's the opportunity that we get to take advantage of as we envision what that interface looks like from the interstate into our community. One of those projects that council may want to consider as kind of marrying to these opportunities is with regard to the Center Street underpass that we have talked about, particularly during the capital planning process that you all have been involved in. And as a matter of fact, we have one cent dollars available for now. Andrew will talk a little bit more about that and maybe what some of those opportunities might include. But in my opinion, the conversations that you get to have with regard to this agreement with the state and the design that you get to oversee is something that your citizens, your visitors to our community will get to enjoy for many, many years to come with the appropriate design and the appropriate forethought. And we're kind of asking you to kick that off now in the form of a cooperative agreement with the state. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to turn some time over to Andrew to help fill in the blanks with some of the details I may have missed and entertain, of course, any questions that you may have. We obviously would like your consideration for a design contract that would allow for more in-depth conversations coming up here in the next several months that will give you an opportunity to decide what you like and what you don't like and what dollars you may want to commit. And so if I can defer to Andrew, I'd appreciate that.
Andrew.
Mayor, council. Carter did a very nice job. It is between Poplar and McKinley Street, the first phase in '23, and second phase not till '25 between McKinley Street out to East Yellowstone Highway. It is the same funds that we used for First and Poplar, also the same funds that we used at CY and Poplar, those enhancements that you see in front of the Walgreens and on the Kitty Corner in front of the 24-hour healthcare facility. Same kind of process, same kind of funds that we've utilized to enhance our community whenever federal funds are available to us. The question before you now is YDOT will take their piece of the pie. They'll take 10% to administer the contract, still oversee construction, an additional 11% of the construction cost to manage it through their cost, their overhead, and that kind of stuff. So right now, the co-op agreement I have, the draft in front of me, is for a construction estimate of $400,000. By the time you add in YDOT's overhead and administration, that blossoms up to $488,000, which would mean I would need $88,000 of city funds to match that $400,000. If you don't want any city obligation, the estimated construction cost would have to come down to about $330,000, $335,000, so the total project cost is $400,000, if that makes sense. I prefer to design the improvements outside of a co-op agreement with YDOT so I don't incur those additional add-ons. So what I would like to request is to use some of the Center Street funds that we have, $460-plus thousand in this fiscal year, to allocate towards design of these enhancements along the interstate. And Carter is right, there'd be some synergy with Center Street and the interstate. It would make sense to include the Center Street design as part of that entire process so it's a comprehensive landscaping effort, if that makes sense. But again, there's two co-op agreements, one for the first phase, one for the second phase. I'd kind of like to know what kind of financial obligation the city would like, other than the $400,000 that YDOT has available to us, and if it's okay to utilize the Center Street budget to oversee, to obtain, design for the entire stretch of interstate and Center Street at the same time.
Andrew, if we use part of those funds for the Center Street to pay for this, would the Center Street design become part of the overall design? Or are we losing the money that we are going to use to design that?
You'd lose, you've got $462,000 for Center Street, and these are round numbers, that you can do with what you want. If we utilize some of that money for design, you have obviously less money for construction for the Center Street portion of it. I don't think you can use the interstate enhancements to make enhancements right along Center Street itself. You know, the underpass, that's probably too far off the interstate system. Does that kind of answer your question, Mayor?
Well, I think more of the question, I'm not saying use any funding from the interstate itself, but I'm saying if we use some of the funds off Center Street that you're going to use to design Center Street to help design I-25, can you incorporate the Center Street into that? Can that become part of the overall design?
It can. YDOT will then probably incorporate that design cost or that construction cost estimate into their cooperative agreement, and will have to start paying that surcharge, what I refer to as a surcharge, on that revised construction estimate.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're asking some good questions, and it's actually part of the dialogue that Andrew and I have had and some of the direction that we need. What I'm hoping we can do, if indeed we get the design done and we've got an idea as to where we're going and so on, is that we can do the Center Street underpass portion consistent with the overall design that the interface with the interstate will, you know, require or include or whatever sooner than the interstate interface work actually takes place. Because at this point, we think the first phase will take place in '23. There's a likelihood that it'll take place in '24. There's a likelihood that the second phase will take place in '25 or '26. And so the challenge that we will have is, I hope that we don't have to wait for the Center Street work that we do internally, if you will, or on a separate construction contract, to happen when the interstate interface work takes place, because that could be a couple more years down the road than we would like, probably. So that's another part of the challenge.
Okay. Councilman Nell.
How much of the Center Street money would have to go to that project?
I'm estimating between $50,000 to $65,000 for design for the entire interstate. If you put in Center Street design with it, you're probably looking at $75,000 to $80,000 for a comprehensive design.
So we'd still have $380,000, $390,000, something like that in there for us to use on Center Street?
Be my estimate.
Well, I guess, follow-up to that, Andrew, and this puts you on the spot, and you probably don't know until the design's done, but do you have an estimate of what Center Street's going to cost us, what the cost will be?
Mayor, council, we will design to the construction budget, to be quite honest with you. If we only have $300,000 for construction, we will give you an estimated enhancement that will cost $300,000.
So when we're talking about these projects, are we talking rebuilding the bridges? Are we talking about beautification, statues, landscaping, all those kind of things? What exactly are we talking about here?
Mayor, councilwoman, that's a very good question. We are talking enhancements. So we're not talking bridges, we're not talking pavement, we're not talking sidewalks. We are talking about decorative lighting, we're talking about wider pathways, if you like, we're talking about landscaping, decorative railings or decorative brickwork for bridges, anything that goes above and beyond very basic infrastructure.
Any other questions? So the direction that you're asking for tonight is to use some of those funds off Center Street in order to move forward on this project, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. To be sure that you're comfortable with us allocating some of those project dollars toward that design, and if that's the case, we will get moving on that aspect of what it is that we need to do. Secondly, however, we're trying to put the bug in your, if you will, to be thinking about some of those enhancements, what you'd like to see, not only at the Center Street piece, but with respect to the interface that the interstate has in our community. It could be additional trees in what we have, it could be additional lighting, it could be all the things that Andrew talked about, and more, which you will see once we get a better feel for what that design would suggest in a few months. One question I do have, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, that I don't think I totally understand, if I could ask Andrew, in terms of the cooperative agreement then, Andrew, what do we need to do now?
Mayor, City Manager, I would like to know how much money you want to have available for construction, for the enhancements. If you have a construction estimate of $400,000 per phase specifically for enhancements, I need $88,000 to enter into that cooperative agreement. If you want enhancements that are only going to cost $335,000, then I don't need any additional funding from the city for those cooperative agreements. I need to know how much money you want to allocate construction-wise for enhancements along the interstate.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, the difficulty that I would have in terms of recommending something to you, and I'm kind of, you know, asking Andrew as I speak here, is that as council sees the design and sees what's available, and we know costs better and so on, council may have a tolerance for additional investment that we don't understand right now. So what would be your recommendation, if I may, Mr. Mayor, in the possibility that council would, you know, want to go a direction of increasing their investment?
Mayor, what I would recommend then is that we enter into a co-op agreement with a construction estimate of $330,000, so the total project cost is $400,000, and we get a design going, and then you can have some options and go, we can do this, but it's going to cost you X amount more. And if that's the case, we will amend the co-op agreement with YDOT to include those additional enhancements, if you will. But either that, I need to know whether other funding source is going to come from for that $88,000, if you want to take it from the Center Street underpass budget available or some other funding source.
So Andrew, if I understand this correctly, we can enter into an agreement if we go at the $330,000. We're not putting any money in at this point in time. If we decide to enhance above that amount, then we'll have to put some more money in, of which that money can come from the Center Street project, correct? Or wherever we choose it to come from.
It could come from the Center Street project unless we spend it already on enhancements and...
Sure.
Or another funding source, correct?
But if we go that route, then zero out of our pocket, but we can still move forward on figuring out what the enhancements are. Because to me, it's kind of hard to pick enhancements when you don't know the cost or what the enhancements can be. Councilmember Pollock.
Are there any penalties or anything like that for amending that agreement if we can't decide? I'm having the same issue, like I don't know the difference of what $335,000 is going to get me versus $400,000.
Mayor, councilmember, great question. You think $400,000 per phase is a lot of money, but to give you an idea, the lights along Poplar Street above the railroad tracks was $120,000, $125,000. You know, the extra wide sidewalk on the bridge over the river was a substantial amount of money. So if you're talking $330,000 to $400,000, you may not be overwhelmed, councilmember.
Yeah, a small, yeah, a small added option for that extra $75,000 or $65,000 for $335,000. Okay, well, yeah, I guess as long as there aren't penalties for amending, that would just leave us more options, right?
Mayor, councilmember, you just approved an amendment for actually First and Poplar a couple of months ago.
Right.
It was not very controversial, so probably not very memorable.
No.
Councilman Nell.
By entering into this agreement with the state, are there future funds that we will incur that we don't know about, other than what we choose to add? Or can they, in other words, do they have enough control over us to pull funds from us without us saying this is what we want?
Mayor, councilmember, the only problem might be if we give them a design that we think is going to cost $335,000, and they go out to bid, and the bids come in at $450,000, then we will either have an obligation to find funding for the additional bid or scale back the improvements to fit within budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I think what we've talked about here, are we good and just going at the $330, zero money, and then pull where we need from? Okay. All right. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. All right, we'll go over agenda review. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking to turn toward the red document here. Pardon me for a second. As you all know, we have a special council meeting this evening wherein we will entertain the second reading for what is commonly referred to as a scooter ordinance, as it were. And then the third reading would take place in our meeting next week, which would be the first regular meeting of August. As far as the first regular meeting of August is concerned, we do have a status update, pardon me, as it relates to the Six Cent program, where we're at, what the public education process looks like, and of course, entertain any questions that you might have. The Bar and Grill Liquor License pre-meeting topic is really just for the purpose to entertain any questions that you have as you enter into that formal debate. One of the things that council will need to determine is whether or not a work session following what you hear by way of the three presentations next week would be warranted or necessary before you enter into a final decision on the rendering or the deployment of those last two licenses. And so, you know, we want to make sure you're aware that that is a possibility if you so choose. We thought we'd also do a pre-meeting, by the way, on the third, as it relates to the back nine development. In the Planning Commission, there was quite a bit of discussion pertaining to that development, and it may engender some questions for you, so we thought, you know, giving you the opportunity to get a real brief primer on what that development's all about and what the discussion with the Planning Commission included might be warranted. Without a doubt, you have a video clip of that Planning Commission discussion on your desktops, in case you haven't seen that email yet. And those are probably the bigger items, if you will, pertaining to that first meeting in August. Moving ahead, we've got a work session coming up on the 10th, and you have some conversations there that you will probably take interest in, one of which is a budget amendment. Not uncommon for this time of year to get started with a new budget year, particularly pertaining to direction that you gave us during the budget process that this amendment needs to accommodate. One of the questions that you will also entertain is roof inspections. This is an issue that came up predating our current council, where the suggestion was that more involvement perhaps might be needed on the part of the city as it relates to that type of an inspection... that type of an inspection process and in regards to what homeowners are dealing with here in our community, and whether or not you want to have further involvement. I would also direct your attention to the back page, which kind of dockets out future items. And of course, that's a reference for your purposes, in case you want to see items added to that list, or something, have specific attention that perhaps it hasn't received yet. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Anybody else have anything on the agenda? Councilman Kathy.
The thing that I was more interested in was trying to find out a little bit more about that back nine, because when I was trying to listen to the video, basically, you could hear the committee members quite well, but I couldn't hear, understand the people speaking from the podium. So it was almost a loss as far as trying to glean what the public was really trying to say. So is there any way that we could figure out something to have somebody from P&amp;Z or from our planning department try to give a little better synopsis for that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kathy, that, I appreciate you saying that. I wasn't aware that that technical difficulty existed, if you will. And so in my estimation, that just emphasizes the need to have a little bit of a primer in the pre-meeting next week. And indeed, we can make that happen. Councilman Nell is your liaison on that group, with that group, and without a doubt, I'd be pleased to defer to his guidance as well in that discussion, too. So yes, you can count on it. If council would be okay with that.
Anybody else on the agenda?
Sir.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you. Just for the record, that is the first, the one and only P&amp;Z meeting that I missed. I was out of town, and I was not there for that meeting. And unfortunately, it sounds like it's the one I really needed to be at, but I was, and I emailed them and asked them, or let them know that I was not going to be available, and if there were any things they needed, let me know, and I didn't hear anything back. So I'm sorry, I can't help in this situation.
That's all right.
Okay, move on to legislative review. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I really don't have anything for that item this evening.
Okay. We'll go council around the table, and we'll start with Councilman Gamros.
Oh, I don't have anything this evening, thank you, Mayor. Tired, I don't know. I'll let you off the hook, though.
And we need to mark this one down.
Notable.
Councilwoman Ingbrist.
I have two things. I received a phone call and, from a gentleman, and he lives at 3609 East 8th Street, so it's an HOA, and it's by Kelly Walsh Fields. And he was saying that from Forest up and down 8th Street, people are just speeding like crazy, and then it's 100 times worse when school starts. And so he had asked a question if it was a possibility to do some type of a study or something to try to slow traffic down. I did go up and down that street a couple of times. The street does not have a sign about speed limits, and so you would assume it's 30 miles an hour, I'm not sure. But there are kids playing in the driveways and kind of in the streets and stuff, and so it's just, he just had a concern. It's not a large street, but it is apparently a problem. And then I did have my senior center meeting yesterday. It was a bit warm in there, so they have fans going on and everything. It was kind of stifling. So I did see that we've got it on our agenda to approve, to get that AC. I'm just kind of hoping that maybe they can enjoy it for a week or two before winter hits, as they're trying to open up. So it was a bit warm in there, so it's, yeah, so I do appreciate seeing that.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you. So on, kind of on the same lines, Amber and I received an email from a gentleman concerning speeding on, I think it was McKinley and First, and so I reached out to our community service officers, spoke with them, and they were actually on their way to put us, one of those speed things to kind of help people recognize how fast they're going. So I think that gentleman's fairly satisfied with the result, that I was able to kind of follow through with him. And then lastly, I would just ask council, if you have an opportunity this week to go and literally visit the three places that are looking for these liquor licenses, I think it'll go a long way for you to see what they're offering and what they're trying to do. Because one of them, two of them actually stand out as bar and grill places to me, and one doesn't. But to actually see it was, you know, I think it would be helpful, I guess, to make an informed decision. If you guys could just poke your head in the door and look, and they've all been very inviting, just tell them who you are, and I just think it would help when we make those decisions, I believe, next week, right?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, certainly those presentations are going to be made next week. Council has the flexibility of either making that decision that very night, or taking the information under advisement, you know, confab in a work session and then come back. You have a couple of options.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, I know we're still having trouble getting chemical out at the water treatment plant, and so they're asking if we could still please help conserve water. And, you know, social media is such a beast in its own way, and people think we're running out of water, and we've been irresponsible, and that's just not the case. The place that makes the chemical is down, and we are literally going all the way to Chicago to get it, and we're just having trouble. Everybody, every water facility that uses that particular chemical is in need of it like we are. And so we're just asking you to please conserve until we get the chemical back online, which I don't think is going to take much more than a couple of weeks, from what it sounded like. So that's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Kathy.
The only thing I have is I wanted to pass on to Andrew, that won't be able to make the CPU meeting in the morning. Supposed to have one at 7:00, and I need to be back north of Lusk at 7:00.
All right. Councilwoman Lutz.
I will not be present for the August 3rd and the August 10th meeting, so I will see you guys later in August. I'm traveling.
Councilmember Pollock.
I don't have anything tonight, thanks.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Thank you. I was unable to attend the Council of People with Disabilities. I had work obligations, I wasn't able to do that. But I'll get that caught up, and I'll give you an update on how that went, so that's all I've got.
Okay, I got a few things. I was hoping that maybe we can have a discussion at some point about the, and I know you and I talked about it, Carter, the ball fields and the responsibilities on, I know that there was a few of us that got emails about the ball fields and the weeds and trash and everything else, but in our conversations, there's a, we're responsible for like the mowing of the grass and watering, but as far as the upkeep with weeds and things like that, that comes back on the organization. So I'm hoping that we can maybe have a discussion about that, and those that are asking those questions, clearly if they don't understand what their responsibilities are, maybe we should have a conversation with them to remind them that entering into these leases, they do have responsibilities that come along with them. In talking about the water and saving water, I actually got a phone call, I got to call the guy back on today, but it seemed intriguing to me that there's cities that want to conserve water around the U.S., and they have some sort of a rebate program that people, that allow people to get money for changing out old fixtures, such as toilets, that take a lot of water, and replace them with more high-efficiency, low-water-use-type toilets. So I'm going to talk to that guy, but it seems like a good idea to me, if that's, if there's such a program we can put in place, and it's not a cost to us, but it would certainly help us out in times like now. I think it'd be a good thing. Not a dig towards anybody, but on, in our discussions, as far as hate crime goes, me personally, we're one of three states that don't have it. And of the three states left are Arkansas, South Carolina, and Wyoming. Georgia didn't have it in 2020, and they now do. But I guess the way I look at it is if Georgia, in the great state of Texas, passed it, then I think the great state of Wyoming should maybe pay attention to what's going on. That's self-explanatory. And the last thing is, I just want to put out there, Senator Enzi, everybody knows, passed away, a tragic accident that he was involved in, and so, you know, my heart goes out to his family and the community up there in Gillette, and that's going to be a great loss, for sure. So that's all I have for tonight, so I guess we will adjourn this meeting and go into our special council meeting. Do we need a moment, Carter, or can we jump right into it? Yeah, yeah. Let's go ahead and take a moment, and then we'll regroup in five minutes.
[inaudible]
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 The July 27, 2021 special council meeting to order. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute, ax and excuse the absence of Councilman Johnson.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, second by Councilmember Pollock. I guess please cast your vote by a thumbs. Do we have the, do we do?
Maybe have Kyle to say it vocally.
Kyle, I'll have you say yes or no. Everybody else, please cast your vote.
Oh, yes.
And please record the vote. Kyle said yes, by the way.
Record, thank you.
All right. Motion passes. Council now consider on second reading the ordinance for amending Chapter 10.64 of the Casper Municipal Code. The ordinance title reads as follows. An ordinance amending Chapter 10.64 bicycles, toy vehicles, et cetera, and similar devices, parentheses, scooters. The chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Nell, second by Councilwoman Lutz. Council now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. I have a note on here that we have a Michael Covato, Bird Scooters, be a go-to meeting? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, how are you?
Good.
Appreciate you allowing me to speak here again. Very grateful for the opportunity to continue working with city staff in Casper. See a lot of opportunity to introduce shared mobility. At this point, given the motion, I was hoping that I might be able to address any additional questions that might come up, but it seems that Mr. Henley and your dedicated city staff have already done a very good job of that. Suffice to say, we remain very motivated to deliver on an exceptional level of service and I remain a resource, both during council meetings and outside of them, should any additional information be requested. information be requested, but forth to continue to work with you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Councilman Nowell.
Mr. Covato, I'm just curious. Initially, you guys had, were going to offer up a $3,000 fee and then pay a per scooter fee, and we have, I guess revamped that into just a $95 fat, flat fee per scooter. I was curious how you felt about that?
It's certainly higher than what we see in other regions. Having said that, I believe it does fall within our stress limits for any financial models. What it could create is, as was mentioned during one of the meetings previously, a scenario where a smaller operator might have some challenges. Having said that, I defer to the wisdom of the council here in terms of ultimately setting what the, if they feel the appropriate licensing fee would be. From our side, it would not present a challenge.
You do understand we did waive the $3,000 fee, though, correct?
I do, yes.
So based on what you said you were going to bring, I think this will save you a little bit of money, not much, but anyway, just curious what you thought about it.
I have had a chance to review the revised ordinance. Appreciate the revisions that have been made. Really excited to be able to operate within the downtown areas. I believe there will be considerable interest for riders to take the scooters within that region.
Any other questions from council? Councilwoman Agbretson.
I know that we have scooters both in Rock Springs and in Cheyenne. Can you tell me, have we had accidents with pedestrians or any kind of problems along those lines?
Excellent question. From a safety perspective, multiple third-party studies have been done. I believe I mentioned earlier that the city of Portland, city of Miami, and the city of Austin have all done independent studies on e-scooter safety, as has the International Transport Forum, which is a collection of transit agencies from 60 member countries. All of those studies have found parity in the incident rate for injuries on e-scooters as the incident rate for injuries on bicycles, meaning you'd likely find an environment where e-scooters are about as safe as bicycles and run into the risk of a similar number of injuries or a similar number of incidents in that respect. One of the benefits of working with a shared mobility provider like ourselves is we do have some very sophisticated technology and can create some dynamic solutions within particular commuting corridors or particular areas. We will be providing a relationship manager for the city that can implement any specific technological solutions around reducing speed, blocking out specific areas, creating non-operational zones during special events so that we can help mitigate the risk of any kind of conflict with pedestrians or bicycles.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gamroth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Covato, for speaking with us this evening. I was in my independent research, reading a variety of documents, one from the Pedestrian and Bicycle Information Center. It's an info brief titled "E-Scooter Management in Midsize Cities in the U.S." It's a study of nine different cities. And in there, they have a number of recommendations, one of which is they say access to e-scooter programs data is quote-unquote "essential" to managing the program and making planning decisions. And some communities across the country have partnered with local colleges to get grants from the International Institute of Transportation and Communities, among other places to process, aggregate, and analyze this data. The data that will be made available through the rollout of a program such as yours, is that something we'll have access to, to monitor and kind of refine our ordinance as we need to, or will we have access to that information? Thank you.
I'm very glad you asked, Councilman. Absolutely. We actually will provide the city with real-time data dashboards that will provide not only the heat mapping, start endpoints, utilization metrics, unique number of users, even some routing data, et cetera. All of it is available via web-based system, so anybody within the city can have access to it. Moreover, the data can be explored various forms, so that if you are working with alternative agencies, they can manipulate it as they see fit to find the answers to the questions that you're looking for. We do try to be as transparent as possible.
Thank you. Follow-up question, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In this info brief, they also talked about examples of cities forming training, ambassadorship, or communications programs to engage the public in adopting safer, more considerate riding culture. And I also ran across examples of operators partnering with agencies like visitors bureaus to support promotional or educational initiatives like scooter routes up in Spokane. Does your company have any intent of, you know, partnering with any of those agencies or participating in any of those sorts of ambassador or educational programs? Thank you.
Excellent question. Absolutely. We have done various community events through our history as a company. We temporarily put them on pause for the duration of the COVID-19 pandemic to reduce any kind of risk of transmitting infection. Having said that, it is something we can absolutely reinstate should the city be interested in that. Moreover, we have a number of educational channels at our disposal that we can utilize in addition to some of these community events. Given, I believe the article you're referring to was published in 2019, we've had a strong opportunity since then to do a lot of social media, a lot of engagement with local press, engagement with our writers via various email channels to help provide additional education. These are multiple avenues that we can utilize to ensure that the broader community is aware of safe riding behavior, proper parking etiquette, and anything that might come up along those lines. Certainly, if there's something unique that we see within Casper, we can explore alternatives as well and implement solutions that best address that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Any other questions? Councilmember Pollock.
I think this is likely a question for Mr. Henley, but based on what Mr. Covato is saying to us, they've got a, I can't remember what term you used, but a liaison between your company and the city, or a relationship management, or whatever term you used, that would allow us to make some real-time changes in how the scooters are allowed to operate in, you know, changing, eliminating certain areas, or maybe changing speed limits or that sort of thing. My question is, does the ordinance give us the latitude to behave in that sort of like nimble type of way in conjunction with the companies that we might be working with?
No, it does not. You'd have to have revised ordinance. Once we have it established as law, and then you have to change that law, you'll have to go through and have three readings.
So, things like speed limit, it indicates the maximum speed for a dockless scooter is 15 miles per hour. Could we put something in that says, you know, subject to city, you know, policy based on, you know, is there a way to write in flexibility for the city so that we could take advantage of some of this variability that this company can offer in terms of, you know, changing, changing how fast they can go and that sort of thing? Or is that something like, we have to allow them to go 15 miles an hour if it's written here in the ordinance, and we would not be allowed to then say, well, today they're going to go 10?
Well, I think that that would be the maximum they can go. We can't put up speed limit signs, though. Certainly, you know, on our parkways, on our property, we can put up speed limit signs. And, you know, certainly for directions in that regard, for safety concerns and the like, we can do that if you have a construction zone, if you have an area where we're having some difficulty, we can always modify that to some extent. But as far as actually changing the law, no. But if we find that there's some problem, then we can, we can take some immediate actions, and then if we need to go in and change the ordinance, we can. You know, there are different ways to do that, but I think going the ordinance way, you know, that's the way we're going to have to go with this.
I mean, suppose in this case that the scooters simply won't work, so that's more of a company policy situation that they would be allowed to exercise within the ordinance that we've structured. So say that we worked with Bird and said, we've got an event, it's parade day, we don't want people riding around in scooters during parade day. They could, on the back end, make it so that scooters don't work downtown on parade day, and that wouldn't be in violation of anything that we have structured for ourselves here in the ordinance. Is that right?
Well, if we made the request, and they were amenable to that request, that's true.
Sure.
Any other question? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council.
Okay, so let's move on to discussion. Any discussion on it?
We've had several emails for and against. I'm of the opinion, like a lot of the people are, that it's just going to be a really good thing for our downtown. And if it's not, we can always revisit it next year or whatever, but right now, it seems like it's just going to be a win for us. And, but I do want it said, excuse me, I do want it said, "Mr. Gamroth, and myself, and the rest of this council are not making a penny from Bird. The city receives permit fees that they pay for these scooters to be on our streets." So the city will make some money off this, but as far as individual council members, that is not happening, has never happened, and it's, it won't happen. So, and that's been thrown all over the place, as I'm sure most of you have seen, but poor Kyle's taken the biggest brunt of it. But I could promise you, the city's making some money from it, and that's the end of it.
Well, and Mr. City Manager, just so you can segue off the end of that, why do we have permit fees in place? And to say that we're making money, there is a cost to the city.
Mr. Mayor, just like any fee that the city assesses with permits, or franchises, or whatever, the idea is that it would cover the administrative costs to oversee the program and, in this circumstance, you know, have the access to the public's right-of-way. But, you know, I do not foresee a major windfall with regard to the dollars that would be paid by the vendor. And, and so while, yes, we will get fees, it will not, it will not be an answer to the city's budget concerns.
And I guess one more thing to add to that, and I'll come back to you, is that there are opportunities, and I wish we had Mr. Covato back up, but there are opportunities with this company, that people within this very community could go to work for this company and actually make money themselves, so just putting that out there. Councilwoman Lutz.
Just an interesting point that I had brought up, or that I had brought up to me was the fact that, you know, we're constantly talking about trying to increase the utilization of the downtown parking garage. And the comment was made, you know, sometimes people, for whatever reason, I think it's just because we're from Wyoming, are not comfortable, you know, walking from the parking garage, you know, two or three blocks to where their intended location is. You know, the scooters might be a solve to that if they're not hip on walking the two blocks. Well, you don't have to walk. It's very likely a scooter will be close to the parking garage, and you can scooter there, park the scooter outside, take a picture, it might be there when you're done, scooter back to the parking garage. And so it was just brought up that, you know, we could maybe kind of promote that as a way of increasing the usage of the parking garage.
Councilmember Pollock.
From, from my research on use patterns, that's actually one of the most common use patterns that exists for these products, is the first mile and the last mile. So, in this case, a lot of times it's for public transit, since, I mean, we have some public transportation infrastructure here, but in a lot of these cases, you know, for our city, it may be somebody drives to a certain point in town, is able to park, can get around, you know, while they're there, and then get it back to their car. So they're not leaving, you know, from a bus stop and, to a bus stop, but a similar situation may be, you know, the parking garage or other parking facilities downtown. So I think that, I do expect to see that.
Councilman Cathy.
I mentioned it before, I will go ahead and go along with the younger generation, but I would definitely caution the people that are parking downtown on Second Street with the angled parking and with all of the trucks and everything, that they need to really, really watch, or you're going to run over one of these guys. And that is my biggest concern, is that we're going to wind up with some accidents from, because I've almost hit jaywalkers down there that try to cut out between, and you just can't see them. So, they need to be cautious and cognizant that these things are going to be on our street.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Yep. Again, I'm going to vote on the second reading for it. Give it a shot, give it a chance to see where it goes, and so I think it, we can certainly come back next year to decide whether we want to give that a shot or not, see if that's a continuation of it. But I think it will be good for our downtown, actually, it's beyond our downtown, but it'll be good for our, I think, our community overall, and so. And I look forward to Councilman Cathy being on TikTok now that he's with the youth. Now that your hips are... What's that tic-tac?
Oh. Councilmember Pollock.
Just one more thing related to what Councilman Cathy said. I do think that we, we should have the expectation that there will be a learning curve with this, and that people do need to be extra careful as we're, the first time you get on a scooter, as we were just talking, you know, the first time, as you start to see them downtown, making, and around town, just, and, and, you know, coupling that with, I think, along the lines of what Councilman Gamroth was talking about at this, you know, getting public information out there, safe riding behaviors. I think that in most places, they're, they, they see the, the result of that learning curve is, you know, maybe a slight increase in, in conflicts or accidents, and then typically decreases over time as people get accustomed to them and understand them and how they work, and traffic adapts and that sort of thing. But I do think, you know, extra measure of care from riders and from drivers will help this rollout be more successful.
Any other discussion?
I have just one or two additional comments.
Councilman Gamroth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm glad to hear that we're going to have access to this data. I think that's going to be really helpful in us, as far as us being able to monitor how this program's going and making any amendments if necessary. As was mentioned earlier, we have received public comments through the city of Casper portal, and I've also been falsely, or closely following all of the social media threads. I've actually been keeping a spreadsheet of positive and negative comments, and so far the negative comments have, you know, there's twice as many that I've been able to find negative comments in opposition to this as opposed to support. So, I guess I'd still like to speak for the people that have concerns, because I think, you know, I'm glad we have a condition built in that we can make changes within 30 days. I imagine we'll probably have to use that, because I still feel like we're going into this a little bit naive. The National Center for Mobility Management suggests starting off with infrastructure. As has been mentioned, especially in our downtown core, I don't know how friendly our infrastructure is at the moment. No, you know, very sporadic bike lanes, angle parking, those things. I wonder if we're putting the cart before the horse as far as that goes. And then there's also, you know, additional research, there's a Forbes article from January of last year, it talks, it says, "An issue hindering inclusive micro-mobility is a tendency for cities to let technology drive those decisions rather than social and economic needs. Taking a systems-level approach is wiser for a long-term planning perspective, but also more inclusive. Instead of deploying a scooter pilot program because they're popular, municipal leadership first determine the specific social and economic gaps in their cities and then identify how micro-mobility can address them." I still remain unconvinced that we, you know, this will be, you know, people will take advantage of the program, I'll probably take advantage of the program, but I'm still a little bit worried that we don't seem to be giving much thought to what, what our goals of this program are. We still, we don't have that baseline goal. What is this going to solve for us? I still don't think we've made that clear, and so, just want to speak for those people that do have, you know, concerns, because I'm hearing from more of them than people in support. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. I guess I'm going to answer kind of back to what Kyle just said. I think this is a business that's coming here. I don't know that there's specifically a goal that needs to be put out there to be. You don't have to tackle a goal for somebody to come and do something different, so that's, that's my opinion, but I don't think we need to have a goal. Okay, any amendments? All right. Please cast your vote verbally if you're Kyle.
Sorry, I'm so early on the fence about this one. The, I'm sorry, I don't want to hold up, but I was having a hard time hearing earlier when Councilwoman Pollock brought up the access to the data, sharing of the data. Does our ordinance as it stands mandate access to that? You know, is that something that we need to have included in there, or not?
Mr. Henley.
I believe that Mr. Covato said that they would provide that, and they pride themselves on their transparency, but of course, you know, that could change from day to day, week to week. We do not have that in the ordinance. It was, you know, I think something that was discussed when we were talking about the contract, but, but as far as the ordinance goes, again, we don't have it in there. And, and if you put it in for Bird, who has the technical capacity to do that and has their real-time dashboards, and then are we going to do the same thing for maybe a smaller group that comes in, and they don't really have that technology, so therefore they are, they are kind of barred from operating on our streets? So those are kind of the two ways that you have to, I think, be considering that.
Does that answer your question, Councilman Gamroth?
Sort of. I apologize, I have a hard time... I apologize, I have a hard time hearing city attorney, but. I'm sorry.
Okay, so you don't have an amendment or anything? Okay, so what?
Point of order, Your Honor. We've already passed the discussion and the amendment. We are to the vote right now, so.
Yep. All right, so let's move back to the vote, and let's go ahead and take a vote once we get the screen back up. Okay, please cast your vote.
Aye.
Okay. So with all in favor, motion passes. All right, that's all for the special meeting. Okay. Before we go into, we'll have an executive session. Before we go into that, I do have one thing that I forgot to bring up. We have, so during council roundtable, I need to bring this up. Next week, Visit Casper is doing the, what's the? Training that they have for the Casper. Yeah. Yes, yes. So that's next on the fourth, I believe. And there's been a invitation extended to all council members if you want to attend that training.
I didn't hear what it was.
It's a certified tourism ambassador training? It's a day-long?
It's a day-long training on basically, you're an ambassador for the city and, and people that come here. So to sum it up nicely, so anyways, that's out there. If you want to go to it, you need to let me know or get ahold of Brooke Kaufman over at Visit Casper or Luke over there, and they'll get you hooked up, so. Okay, and notice in the executive session take place at this date and during this meeting was given, we have a matter to discuss regarding land acquisition. Therefore, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of the executive session, reconvene this special meeting solely for purposes of adjournment of this special meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Pollak, seconded by Councilwoman Engbretson. There being a majority of members present in a motion to adjourn into executive session having been moved and seconded, and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present. Please cast your vote.
Aye.
All right. And with all in favor, motion passes. A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned into an executive session.